We're going to call to order the Tuesday, March 5th meeting of the Cordero Town Council. Please, Lorraine Camero.
Councilmember Casisa. Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ravazio.
Here.
Mayor Beckman.
Here. Thank you. Please join me in the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Thank you very much. Now it's open time for public comment. This is an opportunity for members of our public to speak on any items that are not on tonight's agenda if they would like to do so. If you're in here with us tonight, you'd like to speak, please go ahead and go right up to the podium. If you're on Zoom and you'd like to speak to an item not on our agenda, please raise your hand and we will bring you online here and members of the public will be given three minutes apiece. It doesn't look like we have anyone in public tonight who would like to speak. Do we have any hands up on Zoom? Okay, great. Thank you. So seeing no public comment for open time, we will close open time. We have no presentations tonight. We will move on to item four, which is the consent calendar. These are items that are routine or have been previously discussed and do not require further discussion. Any member of the council or public may pull a consent calendar item for discussion. Would any members of the council like to pull a consent calendar item? Seeing none, we'll open up the consent calendar to public comment. If anyone would like to pull a consent calendar item or comment on the consent calendar. And I don't see any hands up here in person. Do we have any hands up online?
We do not have any hands raised online or emailed public comment for the consent calendar.
Thank you. I'll close public comment on the consent calendar and bring the matter back to the council. Would anyone like to move to approve the consent calendar?
I'll go ahead and move the motion.
Thank you.
A second.
Perfect.
Councilmember Casisa.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ravazio.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Great. Thank you. We have no public hearings tonight, so we'll move on to our business items. The first of which is six A, which is possible approval of bidding for the, what is it? The Central Marin Regional Pathways Gap Closure Project. And I'll turn it over to RJ.
Thank you, Mayor Beckman. Got a short presentation tonight for this item. Bear with me. Under the annotation bar of Zoom, sorry. All right, there we go. All right. Thank you very much. So this is, we're request to obtain authorization to advertise the Central Marin Regional Pathways Gap Closure Project. This would initiate the bidding period. This is a project that has been in development for five plus years. We were actually very successful in getting design funds from the state active transportation program. And also for construction have received a hundred percent, hundred percent funding for that as well. So definitely excited about, you know, the ability to get those funds and also bring forward some very nice improvements to our multimodal network. So as a quick overview, this is essentially the, the project. It really kind of breaks down into these three distinct and unique pieces. On the left side of the screen, you'll see the, the red line. That's our Warnham multi-use path. It's heavily used by, you know, bikes and pets and especially school age children going to and from Neil Cummins Hall Middle Redwood High School, especially from the east part of town. And so that'll get a complete rehabilitation. It'll, it'll be, you know, much improved compared to some of the spots that are uprooted with, you know, lifted up pavement from, from trees and whatnot. And also the, you know, buffers and kind of safety measures will be brought up to standard with, for class one with multi-use paths compared to what's there now. The other portion in the middle worth discussing is this blue line here. This is a two-way cycle track. It's also called a class four facility and we'll get into more about that on a later slide. And then the last kind of main feature here is improvement to the crossing over Pfeiffer. So that's obviously right. There's an existing crosswalk there very close to the on and off rampant Pfeiffer. And so we've put in some design and efforts to really improve it as much as we possibly can. It's a challenging spot. But you know, people need it to get to and from the, the bus and other places. So we're, we're trying to, you know, answer as much as we possibly can. So here is just a little look at the work that's going to be happening on Warnham Drive. So we'll be widening it to a 10 foot wide multi-use path and then we'll be establishing the five foot minimum buffer. So currently in, in a lot of spots, you don't have that full five foot buffer based on prior standards. So that's something that will be gaining that along with slightly wider path and just new pavement that isn't, you know, lifted up with roots and other things. So that's one of the main components. This is that cycle track. And so really it's reconfiguring the road. So we're widening it slightly by a couple of feet closer to the freeway. And that gains us enough to have still one lane in each direction as well as parking on one side. And also provides a full sidewalk plus four feet for bicycles in each direction. So that's the class four cycle track element. But it's, it's kind of a, you know, a facility. We don't see as much, but it definitely has some advantages in that you have parked cars providing a buffer between bicyclists and vehicle traffic. So. But obviously one of the downsides here is the loss of some parking. Currently you can park on both sides of Nellin. There's approximately 65 parking spots. It's not heavily used, especially in the day, but some of the, there is some parking at night. And so that would reduce down to 24 spots. So that's certainly a thing that the town has been weary of. We've reached out to the apartment complex and the other business owners, MMW, whatnot, and have not heard much in the way of comments thus far. This was also, this project also did a sequoet mitigated negative, negative declaration in which noticing went out several years back. And also throughout that process, we didn't hear much in the way of parking impacts. The Tam Ridge Apartments are formerly Tam Ridge and now Belmont Tam. I think it's part of their development. They were proposed to have all of their parking off-site. So, but now I'm sure there's some folks that, you know, maybe choose to park on the street, maybe to save money or have overflow if they have enough guests. But so that's, that's certainly something to be aware of. As mentioned on the introduction, we're getting a hundred percent funding. This was actually a slight surprise in that typical state and federal funds, you usually have to pay at least about 11 and a half percent. But because this has the safe routes component, we're able to tap into additional funds to really take it the whole way. So that's slight improvement to our overall capital budget because we did budget that 11, 11% of the five million. So overall, I think it's a, a good project and worthy to proceed. And we hope to build it this summer while schools out so that all the children can use it for next school season. That I'm happy to take any questions.
Just, just, I would just add one, one note because it relates to some current work going on on Old Redwood Highway. We obviously have the overcross that was recently built from essentially the smart station over to Old Redwood Highway. They're completing that up to the pedestrian overcross, which will then connect right into this improvement as well. And so that I think is a nice tie and you can see sort of how it's being stitched together over time. And if we can get that done, it starts to really create a nice network there of bicycle access over to the paths. Great. Thank you both. Great presentation. We will take questions from the council. Any questions?
It's a little bit off, but is, when this work's being done, has there been progress about the, the mural under there? And would that be integrated at the same time?
We're coordinating. I think we're still trying to see where each other's schedules land, but we've had some conversations. We, one of our staff members met with the artist and so we're working it out. But we don't see it being a major issue.
Oh.
I guess the other part of that is their lighting upgrades under the bridge included in this?
There is no lighting. And actually the portion on the west of the overcrossing that actually is Larkspur jurisdiction up until the Nellin intersection. We may have an opportunity to, to change that one day, but for now it is. And so they've plans on their behalf and signed off on it. So.
So the bus that is, that it's connecting, you know, the bus stop that it's connecting to, where does that bus go? Is it into city? Where, where does it go?
So at Pfeiffer, I assume that we have the bus that's right off of the freeway or actually kind of on the freeway. I mean, I know it serves Golden Gate Transit and can go as far as San Francisco and potentially beyond. And I don't know as much about the Marin transit facilities at that stop, but I personally have used it for Golden Gate Transit several times and it's a nice way to get in and out of San Francisco in particular, go somewhere in city, from Marin City, you can go kind of all different places too.
Right. I was just wondering because of the parking that's being reduced, I'm wondering if some people park there and take the bus. And, you know, I'm, I'm just, I'm a little, I'm always wondering about parking spaces being reduced because then those people go park somewhere else and then that might be a problem.
And, and I got a follow-up exhibit that I can show. So I mean, here's dots representing current parking opportunities. And so here's that bus stop in the far right corner. Curser, I guess barely. So I mean, these blue spots are still there and then also a lot of these spots along the stretch are also going to be there. I, I personally don't see a whole lot of parking during the day for like commuters. And there's also the opportunity to park kind of over by the big five side. Where we do see it is, why I suspect is more of the folks parking at night that live at Tam Ridge.
Someone lived at Tam Ridge. That's accurate analysis. Like I'd say of the 34 on that, maybe half of those are never used day or night. And then the ones that are on the freeway side tend to aggregate longer term parking for like trailers and stuff. Where the people want a couple of days, maybe because they can't bring them into the complex and stuff. But almost all that parking is really excess overflow from the, from the complex for whatever reasons. And, you know, in being there, I would say that the, the bicycle and the pedestrian will allow that complex to kind of flow into the neighborhood better because it is this kind of forgotten piece. And it'd be nice to make that. Sorry. Hopefully that helps. It, it really isn't being used for commuter parking at all that I've ever seen.
And, and from what we've seen in counts, I, I still think there will be enough spots and you obviously have some firsthand experience on that. But the difference is you might have to walk a little further instead of having it. The same amount of spots either, you know, on one side of the street or the other is just going to be stretched out along now.
Okay.
Any other questions?
There are some eucalyptus trees that are going to be removed on. Had it right. Of course I wrote down, but when that street is on, it's not on Nellin, it's on.
I think it is.
The other stretch.
I, I thought so.
Oh, you know what it is? It is.
We have a couple here.
Yes.
So over here on the left, this is on Nellin, right? So to the right of the trees is the freeway. So these are eucalyptus. You know, you know, eucalyptus grow very fast and often become unstable and it's really not a good location for them. I think it's only a matter of time before these would become a liability. And then also they're conflicting some of the improvements. So that's, and that was looked at and still thought it was better to take care of them now with the, you know, benefit of the project. And then separately, there's some other trees along here that are we have the five warm up pairs will be removed and we'll be doing some replanting as well. And then separately, there's some DMV trees that are on their side that we're having them review with an arborist to see if the work is going to impact this.
Right. So are there any opportunities to put back any vegetation where the eucalyptus are coming down? I know it's hard to grow things after eucalyptus has been there. There's not, there's only a few things that'll grow in that soil. But I don't know if there's space or is it coming?
I think we are going right up to the right of way at that location.
Do we have a planting plan?
There are, there is some replanting. Yep. And there, if you look at this, there's a sliver here. I mean, the, the eucalyptus are actually down further. But there's a wedge here that potentially could do some replanting. But I think the new roadway will really go all the way up to the fence. So if you planted it, it'd have to be on the Caltrans side and I don't know how open they're going to be to trees in the freeway right away.
I will just add that as part of the Tam Ridge development on their side of the street. I remember going through the discussion with them, but the trees they had originally planted were deciduous. They were, they were, their leaves and we replaced them with evergreen since you might recall that. Just saw it was really sort of visually drawn. It's nice to see those trees have actually really grown up pretty high. And actually the planting's on Warnham, which unfortunately.
Oh, I'm sorry. My mic was off. Switched it the other way. But, and also the redwood trees and some of the other plantings on Warnham, which at the time of construction, there was concern that they were dying. They were turning red and now they're actually look pretty, very healthy actually. So, but I do, it is a considerate, I mean, that will open up those views again to that facade. But I think the trees that were planted and now have had a good seven years or so to grow have gone, you know, have grown in considerable height. So I think that they're evergreen now. I forget the exact species of it, but that mitigates that potential concern. I know it sounds like other opportunities for planting. If we can do that, we should look into where that might be available. And I have seen, I think that grove of eucalyptus, part of it was on Caltrans in the past and they've come by, thinned it out and removed some of them. Any questions down here?
Mine is also along the lines of the landscaping, that strip, the five foot wide strip. Can you explain what the plans are for that? Or do you know yet?
You know, I, that's, I don't have the, the most intimate knowledge about the landscaping plan. I know that we do have one, but it's likely going to be drought tolerant, smaller vegetation. We're not going to be putting trees in between the roadway and the multi-use path just from a safety standard aspect. But I can certainly follow up with the details on that.
I'd just love to know that we were at least considering California natives, pollinators, you know, the, the plants that are good for the ecosystem is and still being drought tolerant. I know that narrows things down, but would be good to know that we were sort of always looking that way.
Yeah, I just have a couple. Adam, I think you mentioned that from, I'll say from the bridge, is that to the pedestrian overcrossing? That there'll be, what happens from the overcrossing, the pedestrian overcrossing to Warnham in front of Trader Joe's there?
Yeah.
And I don't think it's ours.
Nothing yet. That's the fact it is in, in Larkspur. There are some ideas and plans about how to actually bridge that gap. I don't know if you know if there's anything scheduled to, to do that on the road itself. There's these ideas as well to reach out to the smart right of way and loop back around and down Warnham path. But I think we're, we're not, we're still in the very conceptual stage at this point.
Yeah. So so as you know, that's, that is Larkspur right of way, but nonetheless, something we'd be interested in. There's two different concepts, you know, different alignments of how to get through there. One is to continue on the west side of Redwood and connect to Warnham. And the other is to kind of go behind along the marsh. At this point in time, I don't believe those are actively being pursued. I think they're being pursued for funding perhaps, but not in design or in construction.
Okay. Cause we will still have a gap there, I guess. Okay. And then I assume there's going to be signage directing people either in Warnham on both sides.
So yeah, the exists, you know, I think, I think we have adequate signage now. It's, it's, you know, it's a bike route as it is today. It's just going to be a new enhanced bike route. And then for anyone coming on a cycle track, it actually forces you up at the end onto the curb ramp so that you're kind of crossing more like a pedestrian instead of just darting through the intersection. So that'll kind of be your kind of warning to treat it like a crosswalk instead of just blowing right through.
Okay. And then on the Pfeiffer Nellin side, you're going to put in a flashy beacon, which I think is a good idea. I don't know if there's anything else you can do there to warn people. When people exit there, they're coming off really fast. It's a super short distance from when they exit to that crosswalk. We've all been hit there almost a couple of times there just because people aren't paying attention. I don't know if there's a way to put a secondary flashing beacon more like in the triangle where the bus stop is. Just something. So when people are coming off, they know to slow down because otherwise it's almost too late.
It, it's a challenging crossing. No question. I mean, if there was another way to get people across somewhere else, we would. But the reality is if we don't have it and force people down to Tamal Vista, they're going to cross it anyway.
Right. No, I'm not suggesting, I didn't know if there was some of that feature.
The science here, I guess I'm not sharing, but cover the engineering really briefly on this. Share a screen here. So sorry, it's in CAD, which is sometimes hard to read, especially on a screen. It's a staggered crosswalk. So you cross one leg at a time.
And then.
And then you're staggering. So, and you're staggering in the direction of the oncoming traffic to create eye contact.
Okay.
So that's really the, the engineering benefits of this design. Yeah.
Okay. And also the one that, on Warnham, that one I noticed at certain times during the day, especially during the summer, when people are going towards, I'll say Redwood High School. The way the sun hits through downtown, it's almost blinding the drivers. So assuming that, that beacon would be bright enough or place where people would see it. It's just a dangerous spot.
Yeah. And the other thing that's going on there is we're doing a slight bulb out on the Nellin side. So it will actually improve visibility for pedestrians that you want to cross and also will make it slightly shorter. So those should help as well.
Okay. And then last question is, this came out of the 2016 bicycle bike plan? I thought I saw that in the staff report.
Believe so. I, I know it's been in the works since 2015 or prior.
Okay. Has that plan ever been updated?
I know it's, it, that's the latest version. And I think it's 2014. Yeah.
Okay.
So we're still, there's still items on there that we still have, haven't gotten to.
Okay. It's just food for thought. When I see stuff that's 2016, it's, it's like we're going on eight years old. I know there's probably still stuff in there. It's just, it's eight years old.
I have a follow-up to that one then. So is this part of the, the town like bicycle infrastructure? Was this in alignment with the overall north, south greenway project and a much larger kind of component that's been planned for quite some time between shared communities?
I would say both because I, it's been in our bike, pet master plan since at least 2014. And then separately, it does bring together multiple jurisdictions, right? It's, you know, kind of right in this point where it's on some ends touching Larkspur in two ends. You've got Caltrans, you got the overcrossing, and then you've got the regional north, south greenway concept. And so it's, I would say it's really kind of interwoven with all of it. Are there other routes in this area that some bicycle enthusiasts have preferred? Sure. But I think overall, in talking to our BPAC and our community, you know, more paths, more options is, is a good thing.
I have another follow-up question too. Do we know what the status is of the, the trail bike path going near the lagoon between the trailer park and the, and the are the town and water infrastructure there?
This, the southern segment down here?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that was the one I was mentioning earlier. I know at one point it was funded for design. And TAM was a sponsor. County was the, the lead on that. But those funds were then shifted over to Smart back when Smart was doing the big, you know, doing all their rail stations. And since they haven't backfilled the funding, so that's where that project stands now. TAM, I have spoken to TAM in the last six months. They, they have applied for grants. Thus far have not been successful, but they have applied. So that's kind of where it's at.
Yeah, that came up at the, at the last TAM meeting and, and I was asked about, you know, basically is this still something that Cordero is interested in? And I said, yeah, absolutely. So it's helpful to hear from you that kind of what we're waiting on is seeing what shakes out with funding. I believe there is some Cordero right of way there. So. Is anyone else done asking questions? I've got a few. Okay, great. So on, on that subject, not to be a dead horse, but I'm just curious like, how close to kind of general gap closure does this get us? Are we still kind of Swiss cheesy in, in the Cordero area? Or are we really starting to create that like cohesive bike and pet infrastructure?
Well, I think when you look at the kind of northern and southern options, I think once we finish Casa Buena, we're now going to be able to go from Hill Valley jurisdiction really all the way through down to Tamal Vista and really connect over in, in multiple different ways. So I think, you know, it's, it's a route that you could feel comfortable on as a cyclist and even not like, you know, heavy duty cyclist. But there's always opportunities to improve further and, you know, it'd be great if there was, you know, separated class one bike paths everywhere, but obviously what we've got now is, is definitely solid.
Perfect. Thank you. And then a couple of questions of my own on the planting. As you can see, this is something that's important to the council from both a aesthetic and climate ecosystem standpoint. Glad to see that the, like the thrust of it is replacing eucalyptus trees, which are not native and which are a known fire hazard with native species like those, the madron trees, the dwarf coyote bush and the beach strawberry shrubs. Those are all native. So that's awesome. Love to see us moving in that direction. My only question is, and, and I know Adam touched on this, but the, the eucalyptus trees are quite large and are to some degree screening the freeway from the apartment buildings. And I was just, I mean, I guess if we're up against the right of way, then it's kind of out of our hands at this point. But I was just kind of curious about the prospects of replacing that screening with something else that we hope or expect will grow to, to kind of block the freeway noise and sites.
Yeah. I mean, it's not in the scope of the project. And it's also kind of a, it's a question whether that's a Cordero responsibility typically. It's a Caltrans responsibility to address noise from freeways, but that doesn't stop racers, I guess, from taking a different view.
Yeah. Or we could both work towards that same.
Yeah. So I, I don't, I don't have a, a next ever answer. I'm happy to hear, you know, hear your comments and get back to you.
Okay. That's helpful. And then my only other question was you had mentioned that with regards to the five foot buffer on Warnham, I think you had mentioned that planting trees in that strip would not be consistent with safety standards. I was just kind of curious. I mean, I, I would have thought of all of the things being equal, having trees there are almost like an added buffer because a trunk is harder for a car to go through than a bush. But.
Yeah. I mean, you probably could get away with certain trees that you know, aren't going to grow and become stout. But there's two ways to look at safety standards. When you're talking about, this would be a fixed object, right? You have, you know, the driver's safety. And so hitting a fixed object is going to be worse than. And so hitting a fixed object is going to be worse than not hitting every, anything and just kind of coming to a rolling stop. I'm assuming there's no, look for something that's, that's how you'd have a guardrail. Um, versus the cyclist or the pedestrian who's off the side and trying to avoid the car.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the reality is, um, both are potentially hazards and there's, you know, highway design guidance to really prevent both situations. And there's also just a big liability factor about, if you plant these known hazard fixed objects in an area that these manuals don't recommend, then the city is also potentially liable. So, um, just, you know, if you really believed you had a, um, safety concern, which we don't have a history on the street, you would probably start looking at guardrails and other things.
Interesting. So I'm not sure I'm following. So I guess my, my question is just, it, it's according to the safety handbook, it's unsafe to plant trees next to a bike path. Is that the idea?
I would just say in general, you want to avoid fixed objects and a tree can very much be a fixed object.
Just because if a biker hits that, it's.
Uh, no, it's if a car hits it even, right?
Oh.
You come to a dead stop.
Interesting. Cause I feel like I would be more worried about a car running, you know, running off the, jumping the curb and, and plowing through whatever bushes are there and hitting a cyclist or a kid on their way to school. Um, interesting. Okay. Well.
And more often when we, when we do see a lot of these, um, runoff roads, it's, it's often at off hours, 3:00 AM. So.
Can I ask you a question? And in the new safety standards, are the curbs high enough that they're jump proof curbs at those locations?
Anything eight inches or greater is a fixed object as well. So that is not really.
Not a thing.
That's not something you design around. So yeah, if you believe you have a runoff the road issue, based on warrants, you, the most appropriate thing is a recovery zone, which is a lot of space and nothing in it. Or guardrail. Those are most common things. Um, introducing boulders and trees and other things to solve that is generally not the best practice.
Hmm. Okay. Well, I don't want to derail us with discussion of the, uh, safety handbook, but I've certainly, that's educational. So thank you. Um, I don't have any other questions. Any other questions from council members?
Fascinating though.
It is.
Visualizing.
Right.
Oh yeah. That's why it would not be a good idea to have.
Right. All right. Well.
Object there.
Exactly. Um, so we'll go ahead and open this item up for public comment. So if anybody, uh, here would like to comment on this item, please go ahead and head to the podium. Um, uh, and anyone on Zoom who'd like to comment, please go ahead and raise your hand and we will bring you on.
We have no hands raised and no email public comment for this item.
Okay. And it does not look like we've got anybody, uh, in person wishing to speak on this. So we'll close public comment and bring the item back to the council for deliberation. Any thoughts? Look down here this time.
I'll just go ahead and make the motion. I'll make the motion authorize the director of public works approved, uh, the plans and contract documents and authorize the advertisers for bids for the Central Marine Regional Pathways Gap Closure Project number 18 dash 001. It's probably a long time coming. So good job.
And I'll second that.
Great. Any, uh, party thoughts down here? And if not, I'll just say RJ, good job on the funding. That's, uh, that's, that's huge. So well done. Thank you. Um, and we have a motion in a second.
All right. Council member Casissa.
Yes.
Council member Lee.
Yes.
Council member Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ravasio.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Great. Thank you. And that brings us to item six B, which is an update on the, uh, new town hall project, uh, and a request to authorize an additional $1.5 million, uh, in funding for that project. And I will turn it over to staff.
Great. Thank you, uh, Mayor Beckman and town council members. Good evening. Um, I'm going to kick off this presentation this evening, um, with an overview of where we are today with construction product progress. And then I'll hand it over to RJ, uh, to do the, the hard work of discussing project cost, costs and, and some of the construction details. And we'll get into that in full. Um, we expect there's going to be, uh, a good amount of questions from the council, members of the public. So we're happy to be here, myself, RJ. We also are joined by members of our construction management team from MAC5. Uh, they'll be joining from Zoom, including Paul Beamer and Manil, uh, Badra Charia, uh, who will be available to help answer questions and provide some construction context as needed. And that's, as questions come up. Um, so, you know, while the focus of this item is related to really project costs, possible authorization of additional funds, uh, for the completion of the town hall project, I really, uh, wanted to take this opportunity to formally, uh, provide an update on the town hall project and, um, uh, update our council and our community regarding construction progress. You know, I think many in, in our community, um, have been following along with the progress. Um, either through the periodic updates that we provide, uh, and Mike, as you say, here has been providing on our town hall, uh, or, or Cordera Chronicles, writing newsletter, just driving pa- past the project, construction project from site, from, uh, uh, to and from home or, or wherever they're going. Um, we've also had the town council, the planning commission, the climate action committee all come and, uh, take a tour, uh, of the, of the town hall under construction over the last several months. But in short, Cordera's new town hall is nearing completion and, and it's really extremely exciting. Um, uh, for those of us really close to the project, uh, to see the building taking shape and the vision really of all those who participated in the planning process, um, as well as project implementation, to see this vision really become a reality. Um, we're, we're coming up, if you can believe it, on a six-year effort. Through COVID, you know, to get here. And so it's really, as you'll see, a couple of months away from opening. And it's, it's, it's an incredible effort that I think, uh, we should all be really proud of. Um, so I'm not going to go into all the history here tonight, but I do think for community members who may be tuning in right now and not following with, along with a project, um, from its inception six years ago, maybe you've moved here, uh, you know, since then. Um, but, uh, you know, we went through a, an extremely lengthy planning process, uh, to get to even the start of the construction process. Um, we've had countless public meetings. We brought a ton of information to the table, really just to justify the needs for, uh, the town hall building. Uh, there's the in, in iterative design process, which I really think was skillfully managed. And you can see it now by, by Ron Cappy, our, our project architect, that led to, um, the project that you can now see at the corner of Tamil Pius and Willow. Um, this is obviously not that corner, but it's sort of looking, uh, for, at the northeast corner, uh, taken a few weeks ago. And again, kind of showing that from the back and from the parking lot, there's a, there's a pretty good size mass and a good, good sized building there. You can see the two levels from Tamil Pius and from Willow. It's really a one-story, feels like a one-story structure that's integrated well into the residential neighborhood and is, is welcoming, um, fits in, but it's also prominent and it faces the street and is noticeable and, and attractive. Um, so I think it's fair to say that the, it's really going to be an extraordinary addition, uh, to the community. It's a new civic center where our, our community can participate in local government decision-making. It can act, they can access services, conduct business with town staff and come together as a community for meetings and special events. Uh, I think it's also going to be the town's first new, uh, zero net energy and zero net carbon building. And I, I, I will say, there may be a couple of ADUs that have been built in the last year that were all electric. But, um, but really when you, big picture, it, it is. And certainly the first non-residential structure and scale of it at this size, it's something to showcase and be proud of as well. Um, so we're setting that example, um, by, by, um, incorporating that into this building. Um, so our entire project team is, is really hopeful that the new town hall brings a sense of pride to all of our Cordera residents and community members, really for generations to come. And that's what this is about. We've talked about it being a 75, next 75 years, 100 years. And, and that's what really this is intended to do is stand the test of time. So, um, I know, um, it's, it's certainly a project that our entire team, um, RJ, myself, our, our building inspector, uh, Scotty, Mike, Rebecca, we feel fortunate to be part of and doing everything we can to really deliver on this town, uh, vision and, and for the town. Um, so in terms of actually the components of the building, the, the building's structure is complete. You can see it. Um, all of the utilities, electrical, water, sanitary sewer, telecommunications services have been established. Uh, insulation and drywall have been installed. The production painting is complete. Furniture is scheduled to be installed in mid-April. Um, and, uh, we can go to the next slide. Um, you know, barring, uh, a, you know, really, we've had some rainy days and it's certainly, um, can't anticipate that, but barring a really rainy March and April, we, we do anticipate moving into the new facility towards the start of May. Calling it, if you will, a soft opening, um, with a more grand opening to be determined. And, and at some point after that, we're going to have to actually figure out the logistics and mechanics of how that move really works with meetings and town council, switching over our servers and, and so on and so forth. It's so it's, um, and, and obviously staff will be moving all of our, uh, equipment and items over there, um, at that time. Um, so you can see, um, from this slide, you know, we originally anticipated January 1, uh, back in April of 2023. So certainly there's been some time and delay since that. We talked back last year. We've pushed back to about five months and, and we'll talk about how that impacts some of the costs as well later in the presentation. Um, so that's where things stand from the construction standpoint. I also wanted to, and this is an image you can see of actually just taking, that's today. So the, the dais, you can start to see that's in, um, this is the town council chambers. Frank, you know, it's just, it's actually a really spectacular room. I, I think you go in there and you feel just like it's a great space, um, for us all to, uh, convene in and the community to come in and, and, and just be proud of. So, um, it's, it's pretty exciting to see it taking shape. And you start to see when you see the, the dais and some of the furniture and the finishes come in, how it's, um, going to look and feel and hold up. Um, I, I also just wanted to touch on, since we haven't had an opportunity to do so, I thought this would be a good time to touch on the, on the work of the, uh, town hall ad hoc subcommittee, um, which, uh, was formed in August, 2023. Um, and consists of council members Beckman and Ravasio, um, supported by R and R design studio, David Coyle, um, and assisted by town staff and John Hale, who we brought in, who's our resident historian archivist, former council member, volunteer extraordinaire. I said council member Beck, Beckman. He was first. Um, and, and John Hale, um, as well, it just, you know, she's, uh, so much more. But, um, the ad hoc committee was really created to develop an initial art program, if you can go, yeah, this is, this is fine. It's fine. Um, for the public spaces of the building with the goal of really creating an immediate connection between the building and the community. So that when it opens, there's this tie-in and, um, and that people from the community feel the connection, uh, to it, even though it's, it's brand new. Um, I'll let council members Beckman and Ravasio, uh, provide more detail at the appropriate time. But, uh, the current direction focuses on highlighting a selection of both historic and more contemporary Cordera images, as you can see on this slide. Um, and, uh, you know, focused on placing those in the large lobby area, which is a large space and, and, and pretty grand, which you'll see, it's okay. You can leave it. Um, kind of the space between, uh, the, the permit center and the council chambers. And it's where public will have access to a little seating area, bathrooms. And it sits right outside of, uh, right inside of the, the public plaza. Um, and so we're also, uh, the, the direction from the subcommittee is also to, um, and try to, um, uh, focus on, um, images from local artists, uh, depicting natural beauty of Cordera's environs. Uh, and, and also locate those on certain prominent walls, uh, throughout the building. Right now, and, and I think this was a conscious decision by the, uh, committee not to put images in the town council chambers at this time. Um, and so if you go anyways, that you saw the contemporary ones, this is another thing, working with David Coyle and R and R design, taking an old historic image, the black and white on the left and doing a little bit of a artification. I guess is how the committee is sort of describing it and turning it into sort of a more contemporary aesthetic, but still depicting really Cordera and getting, giving that feel. Um, so I think it was important. I just wanted to highlight it. I think it's important in this context just because it shows also the creative opportunities for community benefit that are embedded within this, um, building. And, uh, the formal recommendations of the, of the committee will be brought to the town council at an upcoming meeting. Um, but certainly if there are comments, uh, by council members or member of the public on this work, it, it might be helpful to hear that during this meeting as well. So I think there's a lot to be excited about. Um, I do think it's important as well to acknowledge, and I tremendous hard work of our project team, and I think in particular RJ, uh, to get us to this point, um, where the project completion is in sight. Um, but certainly we also have to acknowledge costs have escalated, um, beyond what was originally anticipated. Um, and beyond what was authorized by the town council on the April of 2023. And so that's going to be the focus really of the rest of the presentation. Um, costs, as you'll see, relate to certain buckets. I'll, I'll try to simplify it by categorizing them in certain buckets of, of, um, costs related to unforeseen conditions, construction challenges, um, some added projects scope that we actually had anticipated, but weren't in the base bid of the project and some additional, um, some call it design upgrades. Also had some design deficiencies that we, which we can talk about. Um, and as we mentioned earlier, some scheduled delays. And so I'll turn it over to RJ, um, now to get into those items.
Great. Thank you. Um.
Oh, I did, oh, I did. Just to touch on this, this is a small arc. So on the left you have the, um, the lobby where some of that artwork would be, um, hung. And so you can see how that space, um, which just looks narrow here, but it's actually wider. Um, and, and so maybe doubling as sort of a first of its kind space where people in the community can actually view some of the historic artwork, which doesn't exist really in town anywhere to, today. Um, and then on the right, this was built in, which was more of these archival cabinets on the lower level to store some of the documents that are currently stored by, I think, John and her home at the moment. And so, uh, this will help, uh, us preserve some of those, uh, documents in, in that storage area.
Great. Thanks, Adam.
Sure.
All right. So, um, yeah, the next part of this presentation is really to get down into some of the details about, you know, cut some of the budget figures that we were using a couple of years ago. Um, you know, kind of what's really transpired through construction to date, kind of where costs have, um, you know, arisen and, and kind of what the town has done to manage that along with our consultants. So, um, I first wanted to just kind of go back to, you know, at the time when we got authorization from council to, um, bid the project. So at that time, the base bid or the engineer assessment was 11.4 million. And that also, in addition, there was a $240,000 additive bid item for the solar and battery backup. Um, so taking just a standard 10% contingency, you know, at that time it was projected for the budget to be, for, for the construction contract to be at 12.8 million. Um, as mentioned, the staff report, um, the original design did not account for some of the things that we knew were going to be needed. Um, AV in particular, as well as, um, kind of a whole security package. And then a couple of other, you know, smaller items that we really were trying to fit in, but just couldn't make it happen through the original design process. Like, um, trying to get one shower in the building for green commuting. And, um, some of the initial attempts were, it was just too constrained. So, but we just kind of said, hey, let's, let's see, once we get into construction, we'll work with contractors, see what, see what we can do. So, you know, those few additional items really had an extra cost of, you know, estimated 400, 600,000. Um, at one time we were thinking that would be a separate design and a separate bid that would then be kind of integrated later with that original base bid. Um, luckily we were able to work with our architecture team as well as MAC5 and our contractor to integrate those in a seamless way, and I believe with value. Um, so considering that, um, component was addressed, um, Um. So considering that um component was addressed, um. You could extend that the combined range at that time would have been in the thirteen point two to thirteen point four million dollar range, based on those pre-bid numbers. Um flash forward, here we have really the the budget as we see it now. Um. So the last time we were here at council was last April. And at that time, um council had off authorize um two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars to partially fund. Um the AV and security components. Which brought us up to. It was twelve point one two seven million dollars. And so in looking at kind of some of what's transpired and what needs to happen to get us to the finish line. Um, you know, we do think that there's a shortfall of potentially one point four million dollars, and I'll go into more detail about that. Um, we think it could be slightly less. We're gonna fight tooth and nail for every dollar. But we also want to get authorization to um get to the finish line, barring something major unforeseen. Um. So this is a breakdown of 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 the ass one point four for a net um. Construction budget of thirteen point five million. Um. So again, um pre-bid, it's 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 within that range, but obviously when you get lower bids, you. Get excited and you hope you can keep them as low as you possibly can. Um. Also, you know, we did have some other. Soft costs and and in particular today, we're asking for an additional seventy-nine thousand dollars for MAC five. That's really just to fund their efforts from December up until the completion here in May.
I could just just quickly add to this slide. I mean, we're focused here on. You know, the the subject of this item is is really for the authorization of the one point four million. Um expenditure from the town capital project fund to cover construction costs, and then the seventy-nine thousand from that same town capital project fund for um. The extension of the uh or the addendum to the MAC five contract. Um it. There are other costs associated with the Town Hall project, which include the architecture services, which is not included here. We're not asking for any transfer there. Um. And of course, we've also budgeted in this fiscal year for out of the equipment fund, about four hundred twenty thousand dollars for furniture. Some of the um and that's yet to be expended. I think we have a hundred and eighty-eight, we about half of the money's been deposited, but I think we'll actually come in a little bit under that.
So. Thought we'd show a simple pie chart. Um. So if you look at the. You know, anticipated contingency as a whole, again, I'm using a range because we're gonna shoot to be under this this kind of total authorized amount. Um. You can break it up really into four components. Uh we see unforeseen conditions. Um design upgrades and efficiencies. Um additional scope, you know, that would, we'll get to that, but that would be those um. You know, the the AV security um. Fiber internet um. And the shower and then scheduled delays. So um more on that. So getting into some of these unanticipated conditions, so we had some additional abatement. Um, you know, when we. Were taking down the old building, we did some analysis. Um they even opened up some walls to really investigate, you know, what to expect, but. Um, there was more than expected. There were some mold that occurred um. Beyond what was anticipated. Um. Also, the soils um were contaminate contaminated. Um. This was a. You know, former fire station for many decades, and there was aerially deposited lead in the soil. So instead of being able to take that locally to somewhere like Redwood landfill, um it's gotta go. To the East Bay somewhere in like Antioch area. So more trucking, more disposal fees, and. So that was um a six-figure um unexpected um change there. Um. The original structure was gonna rely on the existing retaining wall. Um typically retaining wall has the wall plus a footing that really. Buttresses the bottom and turned out there was no buttress, so it's good that. Um we're replacing it, because um I don't want to know what would happen if that building had, you know, gone through a major earthquake. Um. But at the same time, it really did. Throw the whole project off by several months. Um. We had to delay the long lead steel um design order. They basically had to redesign. A lot of the steel components and really so much of the structure, and that was really kind of right off the bat. Um. It also led to additional shoring needed to preserve the redwood, uh red oak tree there on the corner of Tamil Pies and Willow. Um because what was relying on a retaining wall, now that wall is gone, so we had to put a temporary wall. You know, even though we also did borings in three locations on site, um the bedrock did still vary quite a bit. Um. So. You know, you're hoping to. Twenty-foot deep pile is gonna hit bedrock and turns out it's still shy, so we had to deal with those. Um. And more groundwater than expected to those. The groundwater is picked up in the boring, but. You know, perhaps because we had so many dry years, it wasn't as bad. And then all of a sudden, the last two winters, we did have a lot of rain, so we had to do some additional. Waterproofing and drainage measures to make sure that our new facilities stay dry. Um. Nothing would be worse than tearing up. Brand-new floors and all sorts of things, so. Um. Getting into added scope, you know, I think I touched on this, but um. You know, we were able to integrate a. Complete um. Security and um system and alarm system, and it also includes a ten-year. Service plan, so several cameras facing the exterior, these can be monitored. Um. They can even pick up license plates if needed, uh depending on the location. Um it's access controls, so. You know, whether it's a card fob or it actually can can connect to Bluetooth, if you're. Given the credentials or whatnot of staff, you can actually walk right through. Obviously, safety is a big thing this this day and age, um with everything that's going on in our nation, so. Uh we wanted to make sure that we have a um a safe space and are ready for, you know, the future. On the AV side, you know, this was something that. We had planned on addressing as a a later bid package. Um. We were lucky to be able to fold that into the project. You know, I think we're using some of the existing equipment here, but really, um there's still quite a bit that had to be added. We were hopeful to be able to get um AT&amp;T fiber internet, but really hadn't um. Establish all of those um. You know, required service connections and done all the coordination, but you know, both Alton and MAC five have done a great job getting us there, so we are. Will be successfully getting fiber for the building, which is pretty exciting, and really that'll. Not only be to the. Town and council and advisory boards benefit, but also, you know, there's opportunities to have. Um, you know, public gatherings on on the plaza or at the community center and, you know. If we ever, if we have another PSPS like we did several years ago, people can come down, charge and sit on the plaza on a nice warm day and, you know, use the internet. Uh then I mentioned the shower. Um. Some of the things that factored into schedule lays, I mentioned, you know, we did have. You know, some. Legitimate winners, um so that definitely slowed things down. Um. This was bid. Really during the pandemic, so it's, you know, it's it's gone through all those. Um various issues and and had to grapple with supply chain issues. And then otherwise, just a lot of um. Design details and clarifications. Um. I did bring. So the plans, in case anyone really wants to get to the the meat of it, I mean. When we talk about design deficiencies, I, you know, it's not that there isn't detail, right? I mean, these a hundred pages worth of plans and four hundred pages worth of specs, but um nonetheless, there's, it's a complex job. And I'm gonna ask um MAC five and to really kind of help. Add some context to that. And so with that, I'd like to introduce um. Paul and Manil from MAC five, if you guys can. Show your. Video and and help kind of discuss just. And and put some context to the design upgrades and deficiencies. Um. I guess I'll start by saying. You know, we do low bid projects. And so, you know, we're under obligation to give it to the lowest responsible bidder. Uh regardless of whether. You know, we like them or not, if they're qualified, if they're the lowest, we have to give it to them. And so really, the nature of the work is for contractors to only bid what is explicitly shown and nothing more. It's just the nature of the beast, unfortunately, and it's basically what we do day in, day out. It's it's the game we play, but. In some ways, we enjoy it. Um. Other times we don't, but it it is a cat and mouse game, like, you know, Roadrunner and uh. The uh wolf, um, yeah, Wile E. Um. So, but I it, I wanted to say that um. With some of these, it's not that you're. Paying twice. It's like. Um, really, the the bid is only based on a limited piece. And then. They add it on later to get the rest of it. And I'll just give one example and and I'll ask these guys to help kind of add some context, but. Um, you saw the beautiful um ceilings in the photo of the council chambers, right, exposed duck fur. And that has a clear coat stain on it. Okay, well, the intent was for everything on the. Top floor to get that same stain, but because. The notation only pointed to the council chambers. The contractor only provided the clear stain in the council chambers. So we didn't pay for e- everywhere and then pay again. We just only paid for what we got. And then we had to get a change order to pay for the rest. Now. Did we play a slight premium compared to if it was in the base bid? Probably, but I would say closer to like twenty percent. So those are the types of things that we experience on these public projects, and for one that is as detailed and complicated. You know. In nature, um. To some degree, some of this is is normal, but obviously um. We legitimately had hoped to be closer to our original authorization amount. Um. So with that, I'll I'll turn it over to Paul and Manil and and, you know, they can talk about. Um. Just kind of their experience and and kind of paint the picture on. What they've seen on this project. And I'll stop share just for a second.
Evening. So um just to bring you up to speed on some of the issues that. RJ started to highlight, um some of the early constraints on the. Is there a question? No, okay. Um. The the site logistics uh were a real challenge for us, and though. Uh we had a sort of construction management plan for how delivery of materials and all that was supposed to work, the size of this. Property is so tight that uh getting materials in and out. Snowballed down the course of construction with the schedule delays, because. They couldn't bring deliveries in in certain times, and then we had scaffolding up around the outside of the building. And so here it is, a year and a half into this project, and the architect said, no, that's not quite the way the siding was supposed to look. And weren't able to figure that out until all of the scaffolding came down and you could look at the building as a whole. So um there were issues about how the complexity of the. Uh materials on the outside of the building uh were detailed in design between the stucco and the the wood trim. And the various flashing pieces. Um as uh RJ alluded to, in a. Public bid process, it's bare knuckles. They only give you what's on the drawings and you have to fight for everything else. And MAC five tried to be proactive about that, and we noticed deficiencies in the documents. Uh before it got to that point in construction, but it still took more time than was allotted to get those details flushed out. And to get um. The architect to provide the the details necessary for the contractors to bid it, and then to find out how long it was gonna take to get those materials on site. And as I mentioned earlier, with the. Uh site access, the ramp down from Willow was always considered a place that we could come and go on, and unfortunately, it was so steep that. A lot of the equipment couldn't use it, and now that it's raining, nobody can use it. Um. So um early on, we. We had planned the the amount of time it would take to get things done and couldn't do it, because. Things had to sit there like this pile of dirt that we excavated behind that retaining wall. It sat there for many months, which slowed down a lot of the progress on the outside of the building. Some of the other, you know, sort of issues that have slowed us down, or even though we were proactive with PG&E. Um and had meetings before construction started to find out how they were gonna bring their power into the building. Uh it was originally assumed that they were gonna use the vault on Tamil Pious. And they changed their mind and decided they were gonna come in off of Willow. Well, there's a change order just to get the power rerouted to where they'd like to bring it in from, which took time and money. Other issues that that came up during the the design process were the 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 plaza deck. It's going to be a really nice front porch, but there's a lot of expense that goes into that area that goes well beyond the. What you would consider the cost per square foot for the building, because it's all outside of the envelope, so it's sort of get rolled into the bottom line, but it's. Uh eh. There's a lot of expense and and value, I think, in how that roof and concrete deck. And the waterproofing that goes over top of it, and then the paver system that went on top of that, all ties into the flashing of the building. Didn't quite all work, and so we had to work with the contractor to sort of iron out what details were missing in that uh that package. Uh and that took more time and more money. And even though we were proactive in trying to. Uh get them to um address those things early on. The the bidding climate here is they don't look at it until they've got their tool belt on and saying, I'm gonna work on this now. So it's it's challenging to get them to show up to the party early. And evaluate some of the deficiencies there uh in a timely fashion, and unfortunately, that has slowed some of our progress down here on the uh the completion of the project. We we added the uh the the furniture and the audiovisual systems to the to the building. Um. We laid out all of the furniture to make sure that it was ergonomically correct and fit within the rooms that were provided. Unfortunately, some of the places to bring power and data into those workstations were right over top of beams, or there was no way to get into it, so. Worked with the electrical contractors and uh tried to figure out, you know, some solutions to to get around some of the uh constraints on our building. I think some of the 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 other issues, yeah, you call, pardon? No, uh. Uh, call them the the designed efficiencies, but we um we added this audiovisual system, which was. An independent contractor who's gonna come in and install all of that AV equipment, but we still needed to coordinate it with our electrical engineer. Well, it just happened the original electrical engineer on this project. Retired and sold his business. And then that business sold that business again. So now the people that were trying to get to modify the electrical drawings for the audiovisual system or for the furniture. Don't have a uh a history with it, and so getting them to turn things around was uh was challenging to constantly be harping on them to. To to get the documents so that we could get the the proposals from the contractor, uh unfortunate, uh but beyond our control.
I think that's good. All that being said. Wait for some questions on that, I think, um and. Yeah, my mic's on, all right. Um, you know, and I and I think we're we're wanted to be transparent and. Point out all the areas where we ran into challenges. I think there's a just as many, if not more, examples of where we were proactive and actually solved these issues at a cost-neutral option. Um at the same time, so I, you know, but I I think in the. We're here because there's cost escalations, and so we're focused on those pieces that, you know, want to provide some examples and transparency into that process and what happened. But again, I think um in in a lot of ways, we managed really well together with the contractor and the architect to actually solve a lot of complex problems without. Sletting costs as well, so point that out. And I don't know, I also um either Paul, Manil, if you, if, you know, just some of the um. Context, I mean, see other projects and just maybe it's helpful for the public and the council just to hear how this. Type of project sort of relates to maybe other public projects that, you know, have, you've been construction managers on in in other examples and and. Examples and and um trying to paint the picture, whether this is, you know, anomalous or or sort of.
Yeah, if I could intro that and then I'll we'll hand it off to um Paul or Manil, but um. You know, obviously, one of the the main things people look at is, you know, cost per square foot, but um, you know, this is a unique building, right? It's um zero net energy, zero net carbon, and then this plaza feature really is kind of it's. You know, very usable space has a tremendous amount of benefit. Um certainly has a cost to it, but doesn't. Um show up in terms of square footage for people who typically look at those kind of baseline numbers, you know, it's roughly seventeen hundred feet, so. Um, you know, I I don't have the exact counting, but it's certainly um between, it was a certainly between a half million and a million dollar feature to have this. Um grand entry plaza. Um obviously, a lot of the architecture elements are are really um, you know. Pretty amazing, and I think will be appreciated, especially over time. Um and then just the other thing worth mentioning is um. You know, there's this whole balance about, you know, do you put more and more resources and and time into your design to just continue to get them? As perfect as you possibly can, or do you address them in construction? And that's kind of a common balance, but. Um at the time where we did bid this, you know, we were at this uncertain time of the pandemic. You know, we did see costs really pointing in the direction of up. Um this was basically verified by this. California Construction Cost Index, which showed it went up nine point three and nine point four percent. Uh we bid at a good time of year in the spring. I think had we waited four months and bid it in summer, we. I think it's could have been, you know, a lot higher. Um so those all kind of baked into kind of the decisions we've made, and I think. Um, you know, we made some good ones, but you know, we did have to endure some of these um challenges to construction. Um but yeah, I want to pass it over to um Manil to talk about, you know. Their experience um and and also their insights on this project, but also just experience in in the area and region and and what they do.
Uh, thank you, RJ. So. Uh, you know, in in general, the construction market, as you said, has been um. Impacted overall by the pandemic, and as you all know, cost escalations have been, you know, uh way over uh average. Or historic average for the last two, three years. It's kind of, you know, leveled out now. But when the time this project was out to bid in, you know, the following year. Um, as you pointed out, you know, we're we're seeing a lot of escalations. And on top of that, uh. One of the issues that, you know, all construction projects were facing is pretty much uh. Uh, you know, a lot of work, uh public work uh available to the contractors and the subcontractors. Basically, uh, you know, there was a, you know, way, you know, tapping out of the labor market and also. Uh, you know, construction materials. So what we have seen over, you know, over over the course of the last few years is projects actually taking. Uh longer to finish. For the reasons of, you know. Contractors being maxed out and 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 uh the issues with the uh, you know, delays in getting construction materials. And uh um and just, you know, having vendors actually be able to provide you the materials, even though you put your order on. In time, and some of this actually also happened on this one, too. STO was a good example on this one. Uh, there's a uh the electric switch gears, you know, HVAC equipment, all of those. Uh kind of went through the same process that uh of delay of getting them uh from the vendor. And, you know. We are hoping, again, we are, we are anticipating that the 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 market is going to cool down and. Uh, uh, the work, uh, you know, contractor's schedule is going to get better, you know. Subcontractors and I'm gonna gonna have uh uh, you know, enough capacity to actually take on work. Um with with hopefully, you know, with with this cooling down of the market. But over the last few years, uh the trend has been that um, you know, projects are taking longer to complete them, especially the construction side. And the design side too, it's not just construction. The design side has been faced the same um uh problems, you know, shortage of manpower on the. Design engineering side with with architecture and engineering firms. And design process is also taking longer. Uh so. You know, and on coupled with that on this project, as 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 has been pointed out, you know, the challenge is that the project went through. The strange side, you know, enforcing conditions and then redesign required due to enforcing conditions. Um, um, did, and especially also at that time, uh early last year was definitely the weather impacts. That happened during, you know, the foundation work in in the exterior uh sub uh superstructure work. That all in a way has, you know, contributed and compounded the 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 the. The extension of the construction schedule on this one. So uh. You know, I I mean, is it, I would say it's not atypical at eh uh in the last few years for the construction delays. Uh due to the market conditions and and all of that, but at the same time, uh the project also, you know, went through. Its own delay because of uh all the challenges that it had to go through. So. You know, Paul, if you want to add anything.
No, I think um it it, we tried to be proactive over the course of construction in the beginning. You know, look for long lead item issues for, you know, placing orders. Um and it it it's really challenging in this market if you want to change anything along the way. We've got a really nice quality window being installed in this building, but Marvin said that if you made any changes. Your entire order was going to the back of the line. So you had to really have your ducks in a row, or the windows were going to take us. Eight, nine months to get, once the uh the submittals were reviewed by the architect and then put into the the manufacturing process. So it it's not unheard of, and there's a lot of our civic projects of this scale and and larger that have gone uh well beyond. Uh anticipated uh construction durations.
Great, thank you. And um sure, there'll be questions that uh we'll come back to, but uh yeah, for now, I just wanted to. Provide that initial presentation, start to paint the picture of kind of how we got here, um but obviously. Happy to answer more and.
Yeah, and and just on the on the funding of this, I think, and in, you know, one of the positive things that the town council has done. You know, and I think um over the last several years has been proactive about anticipating potential costs that. Mirror rise as a result of. Um, some of the things we're talking about tonight and 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 additional costs related to town hall um projects. So the town council. Has um, one of the funding strategies has been to actually putting uh put unallocated ending balances over the last few fiscal years into. The Town Capital Project Fund. That was budgeted for about four point four million um going to the town hall project in fiscal year twenty three, twenty four. Um, we had the conversation uh back with the finance committee in November. Um admittedly, wasn't necessarily assuming this much of a um uh additional cost, but we certainly anticipated some additional costs. At that time, um and and in January at the town council meeting, um also uh with the staff's recommendation. Recommended um putting the entirety of the one point seven million of the fiscal year uh twenty two, twenty three. Unallocated funds into the town capital project fund. So the good thing here, even with all this said, is that. Um, we have one point five million dollars in the town capital project fund. Separate and apart from all of our sales tax override funds, all of our other budgeted items. As you know, RJ's talked about him at length, both the last meeting and this meeting. All of our other capital improvements are moving forward and have been moving forward over the last several years. We even, you know, including three million dollars for the Tamil Pious Overcrossing Project, a lot of the road improvements. So, you know. I just want to put the financial picture, that in context for the financial uh the financial picture and and sort of how we have. Anticipated some of these costs, at least from a budgeting standpoint. That I'll just end there and open it up for questions.
Alright, well, thank you both for the uh presentation. Appreciate it. And I especially want to thank uh Paul for. Giving us some of the kind of like more concrete examples of the types of things that you ran into, because it helps us. Um especially those of us with less construction experience, really kind of wrap our heads around the nature of what it is that we're talking about here. Uh so we're going to open it up to questions from council members, and then we'll take public comment, and then we'll bring it back to the council um for discussion and deliberation. Who'd like to start us off with questions?
Uh thanks for the presentation, and I appreciate that you broke down the four buckets you were talking about, because I think that was um really helpful. This is probably a off the wall question, but when we come to the end of day, what's the total cost on this building? Because. It's not really in the staff report. If I take the thirteen, five or up to plus another seven hundred and seven, some odd thousand. From MAC five or so for services, that's fourteen five, but I don't think that's the total cost, right? Can you ballpark it for us so we know at the end of day, we're not getting sticker shock?
Um, I I don't have it for you right here, but it's it's if you took the April staff report. From April eighteen twenty three alongside this, all the numbers are there. Um so we're basically taking what came in April and then asking for um one point five million to get transferred over.
But there's more costs in that, right? Because I don't know if that includes the furniture. Um, the lease of this building, there's soft costs also. I guess what I'm trying to get at is what's the total cost?
No, absolutely. And and there's different ways to break that down, and I, one is that part of what we're talking about here is we're still negotiating some of these items out. So I don't want to say what the total cost is with until we come back. There is going to be an upcoming. Project closeout meeting where we detail all of those costs and we'll get into exactly what those final numbers are. Um, the reason why there's there's a couple of different ways to do this. One is um and and certainly will provide this information. Um that they can a lot about it. From construction beginning, obviously you have hard costs, soft costs. You have um the furniture and fit out. Um and then you do have all the temporary expenditures such as we're renting this building and we can, you know. Gets into that, goes all the way down to um the engineering trailer or utilities. We have all that broken out. So I I don't have the number right now. Um I think. Um, I could tell you as of February, we were, and and again, even with, I've asked Daria for this information, she's given me the the the. The the numbers, the raw numbers, but I think it goes back even prior to two thousand eighteen, and so I I'm sorry, two thousand. Twenty two when we started this project, so it's going to be inflated, but just the temporary. Moving costs, uh some of the temporary items, the trailer, the rental of that, I think we're close to eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars as of February. So that that is a significant chunk. And some of that, I'm going to say. Engineering team was in the trailer before, you know, they had to get out of the fire station, so they probably would have been doing that anyways, and I want to. I want to really look into the details of that so I can get a real accurate number, thinking through um the other thing. Uh, you know, for example, we are spending money on new servers, but in my estimation, we were, we were going through that as part of our cybersecurity. Updates anyways, and so I'm not like counting that. That's going to be installed right away. But there's a lot of costs and I and I and I just want to make sure that we're. Um defining the parameters when we talk about that. For example, Cappy's contract, Ron Cappy, also started with the planning phase. So are we going to include the planning? Uh entitlement phase of the public meetings and what and whatnot. Um and and so there's a number of different ways to break it down, but we do have all that and and the council will receive that. I I don't know if we want to.
So really on this slide, um, you know, we've summarized the Alton construction contract. We've summarized the MAC five construction management. The mi- big pieces that aren't here are, we have uh roughly three hundred and. Paul, is it three hundred and sixty or three hundred and seventy thousand in furniture?
Furniture, yes.
Yeah.
It's on the, yeah, it's asterisk on the bottom there.
Okay. And then, so we have a budget amount four twenty there, and then otherwise, we're talking about six years worth of. Cappy and his team for planning, design and construction support.
Okay, we're probably looking north, well, north of fifteen million then.
Yes, well, if you add all those.
Right there, you have fourteen and a half, eight hundred plus another four, it's another million two. Again, I'm just trying to, I'm not trying to hold you to the exact number.
I think that's.
I just want to make sure that there's no sticker shock like two months from now. If all of a sudden we go, oh, by the way, the whole thing cost sixteen million.
Yeah, well, sticker shock, I don't think we've ever defined it in those terms. It's one of the things that I'm trying to also talk to, because I think it's. We've mostly talked to the the construction contract amount with the soft costs separately, and those have been really defined. But if we're going to do the all in, we've never really done that from the beginning, it sort of. So uh but but yes, I think all in, we're going to be in that that range above fifteen million. Um I think there are other costs that. Again, the temporary accommodations and whatnot that need to be factored in um to that as well.
Okay.
So.
And that this um seven point seven million selling certificates of participation, are we through all that money? It's all.
Yes, that's all paid for. That's dispersed. Yeah, absolutely.
So just paying the debt service on that now?
Yeah, and and so the debt service of the certificates of participation are being paid through the sales tax override fund, and that will be ongoing.
Okay. Similar to the presentation, I think RJ, you may have mentioned um use the word design flaws. Is that on the architect? When there's design, again, I think you like kind of hit the nail on the head. Some of us don't have construction expertise.
Yeah.
Is that something that's on the architect?
So um. The reality is, and I can say this best I can, um every project has a change order. That's just, you know, nothing is ever that perfect. Um so to an extent. You have a contingency to address these imperfections, these. Maybe even a contractor has a better way of doing something that adds value, but you make an adjustment. And so I would say, you know, a chunk of your contingency on every project is dedicated strictly to that. Just getting the full design intent delivered, and then separately, you hope that you still have some leftover to. You know, take advantage of opportunities and um add value and do other things, or just return it to. Um, you know, your original fund source. Um on this one in particular, I I probably would kick it over to Paul Manil in terms of. I mean, this is a highly complex project. Um, you know, obviously, we do other projects here for public works. Um but this one is, you know, when you're talking about having to design every conductor, every pathway for every component. And how it we use through the building, every piece of plumbing, I mean, it it's it's a lot. I mean, we don't typically. Build projects of this magnitude very often, and so there is inherently more. Opportunity for these kind of. Flaws, deficiencies, um whatever you might want to call them. Um but yeah, I mean, I think in general, I think. You know, we all um had wanted it to be more controlled. Um, so you know, there is an element of of disappointment there, um but I definitely wouldn't say that it's not also. There is some level that's that's built in, this is going to happen, but yeah, and Paul or Manel, you want to? Talk about specifically, um, you know, what is typical when you talk about vertical construction? For a project like this, and I think Manel, at one point, we talked about. Uh even really the the site constraints and topography really playing a role in that, you know, this isn't. Flat site and and maybe you can just get into that more.
It you you've got a lot of bang for the buck in this in this building. Um the the height of the building limited. How much space you could have a bunch of this above the ceilings, and a lot of times, the the light fixtures and the plumbing fixtures and everything that gets hidden in those spaces. Uh so it gets ironed out in the field by the trades. That space was so tight on this building that anytime you moved one thing, it rippled through the rest of the. Um uh the components of the building, it made it very difficult to uh um to try to come up with a a quick solution in the field. Uh because of the overall height of the building and what you could get in between the the floor heights.
I think that RJ noted, you know, I mean, uh I just, as noted, I mean, the design documents, you know. Cannot, none, I mean, no project has a design document that you can, you know, actually say is hundred percent complete. Uh when you go out to bid, especially in a public bid project, uh there's always an expectation of uh. Uh, you know, uh, design intent or some of the design documents being diff- deficient. Uh during construction and it's only gets kind of revealed or found out during construction process when when the guys start putting in and when the when the workers start putting it together. So some of that is certainly, you know, expected, was expected on this project. And I think that's why the town was carrying a contingency to on, on, on the construction contract. I think what ended up did happening probably is that there were definitely more than expected. You know, added scope and cost from the, from the, from the design side. But then on top of that, you know, we got the unforeseen conditions that got added into it or added on, you know, costs that came on top of it. And then also, you know, the weather and the schedule delays that added to it. And then some of the scope ads that happened, as you pointed out, AV, you know, security, you know, the, the, the package that got added on to this contract. And it also added contractors' scope because they had to do, you know, as Paul noted, you know, electrical work and pathway work for all, all, all the systems that are getting installed. So all of that combined actually kind of blew the, blew the contingency in a way. You know, the project went way over the contingency that, that the town was holding. And, you know, maybe in hindsight, if you know, the engineer's estimate as most, you know, eleven point four, eleven point, you know, seven, including, you know, alternates. And I think there was, there was probably, you know, if we had held a ten percent contingency, we would have probably, you know, looked probably done better without reducing the, you know, actually the construction value when, when, when the bids came in. But overall, you know, we did experience, I would say, and Paul would probably, you know, probably knows more as he was involved in the day to day, that there was more than, you know, usual design change orders that came out on this project.
All right, thanks. And I just have a few more, Eli. Change order process, did the change orders with those go to MAC five and then go to you for sign off? And were there dollar amounts involved for a control if they were over a certain dollar amount? Just high level, how did that work?
So they typically start as an RFI, so a request for information, you know, contractor says or subcontractor says, hey, this detail, or there is no detail that shows me how I'm supposed to waterproof and flash this part of the building. And the designer then says, oh, use this detail, use this type of flashing. And they go, okay, well, that is new, that wasn't in my bid, so here's a cost for that. And then MAC five takes, so the designer touches it first, MAC five takes it in, looks at the, the costs and says, well, are you sure? You know, let's look at that detail. Let's look at that spec section. Are you sure it wasn't included? Let's go down all the details. And sometimes we'll say, no, you're, you know, we've had, you know, we had a forty thousand dollar fire sprinkler request and we said, no, not paying it. Not, not our problem, right? And other times you go, oh, shoot, yeah, this one is valid. Then MAC five would say, yep, we review this, we recommend, you know, approval. I would take it in, review it and then initiate the change order. And then obviously as part of the progress payments, I would also ship them to Adam over a certain threshold, so.
Okay, so there's controls in place. Okay. On the staff report, there's two options, one is we approve the one point five million or two, we take no action. It's taking no action, reading option.
Generally, so I mean, this kind of gets back to the question about, right? On one hand, you want to know the bottom line. On the other hand, we want to get your authorization to spend funds. So I don't, I don't think we'd be doing you all a service by basically making all the decisions and coming with a price tag that's over the authorized amount. So we'd rather not spend all the money before rather have authority to move forward. So yeah, at some point, and I don't know what the burn rate would be, at some point in the next month or so, we would go over that amount.
Okay, all right. And then one last question, you mentioned a security system that it also reads license plates. Do we have a policy in place for how that's going to work for a privacy issue? Or do we need one? Because I could see people going, what are we using it for? What's the purpose? What's the intent and all that stuff?
Certainly what we do know, and Amy maybe can chime in, we, we do have to keep recordings for a year. So that is part of it and they will, we have, you know, we have addressed that as part of the technology. It is uploaded in the cloud and they will hold it for a year. But how often we use it is more based on incident, I would think. But yeah, certainly some more discussions as we roll that out.
And we'll, we'll be discussing this in the future when we talk about actually sort of the license plate readers that are being used more like the county sheriff's office and some up in, I think Tiburon has one and there's one up in Nevada is using them as well. So we'll develop a policy around that for sure. And I, my preference obviously would be on the, on the town hall, not to, I don't know if that's a feature we can turn off, but just not do that feature at a town hall. It's really a, I think a need for obviously our shopping centers and our, and our malls and our major intersections around the commercial areas.
We need to be clear what, if we're going to turn it off, then we're not using it. If we are going to use it, then I think we probably need policy.
No, I mean, that functionality of the, so yeah, probably.
Yeah, I mean, the, the cameras are all like a sphere that you can point where you want them and not where you don't want them. So if you want to just pick up the plaza and not pick up Tampa Pies, you can.
Yeah, I just, again, I know what you're saying is just, we need to figure out what we're going to do with that and then how we approach it. Thanks.
I'm just going to go down the line here and then I'll come back to myself last, so.
Just one quick question, as someone who has built several houses and gone through all of these contingencies and change orders, I'm just wondering, and I think Adam answered it already, but I want to clarify. Due to these additional expenses, are there any projects or activities in town that are going to be compromised because of the loss of funds?
No, no, I think we have not.
We're still, I mean, the big ticket project this year is cost of one to complete streets and that's coming before you month or so.
Thank you, Rosa.
Okay, thank you. First, I'll say thank you for laying out the staff report so well. It kind of made it easy to see how we got here and also for the presentation of MAC five explaining just how the project went. So my question is, how, if we approve this money tonight and then we understand that there are some things that are still outstanding, they're not covering everything to the completion. Where does the other money come from? Is there enough money left to cover everything when you come back for, say, the furniture or whatever else needs to happen?
Furniture, we have basically a price that's, it's dialed in. I mean, I don't, Paul, you can talk about if there's anything that would change, but it's, it's as far as I know, it's, it's pretty thick.
It's pretty concrete.
Yeah. And in terms of what we're asking, there is, we have set aside some buffer for the unexpected. Again, if it rains for the next two months straight, that's not within the buffer we've allocated, but we've made some reasonable buffers, reasonable assumptions. We are still actively negotiating the amount of schedule delays and also are negotiating several items. So, but again, we have factored that in to the number that we're here speaking for.
Okay. And so it all just comes out of an existing bucket that is already set aside specifically for this project. There won't be any other funds we have to go find?
There was basically a surplus in the capital fund and those are, so beyond what we've already committed, you know, the specific projects, we have a surplus. So that surplus will be used to fund the remainder of this project.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Actually, I don't have any questions.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, maybe because I know the process too well.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Okay. I mean, yeah, I mean, my thing is, is like, when, the reason you have a construction manager, you have a licensed architect, you have the contractor under license and you have this whole process is that every single one of these things were well vetted and known as it went through, right? And so to question it is, you know.
Sure. Well, we'll come back to your insights on the discussion portion. I have a few questions. My first question is, is for Paul. You had mentioned design deficiencies and as we know, no, no drawing set is perfect. There's always RFIs, there's always going to be change orders, that's fine. But I am curious, how did the deficiencies that you saw in this drawing set, especially initially, like our, our initial bid set, how did the deficiencies you identified there compare with kind of what you would typically see on like your average project?
Hmm, that's a loaded question. I think that this was probably about normal. Some of what MAC five tries to do with all of our projects is get engaged with the design team before it goes out to bid so that we can do what's called a constructability review, where we go in and look for the, the mistakes or the missing scope. And we did some of that here, but at the time we went out to bid, we didn't really get deep into that. And, and so I think it was a surprise to all of us that the amount of change orders we encountered here are higher than I'd say normal.
Okay, yeah, because I, I know that like one example that you gave was, it sounds like the, the spandrel space is really tight in this building between the drop ceiling and the underside of the floor structure above, which is fine. Like that happens sometimes, especially if you're under a height limit. But that does obviously mean if you're, if you know you're working in a really tight space, it means you need to more carefully lay out your mechanical and your electrical and your plumbing before you start building it. And so the, the example you gave was that like these things are often laid out on site and that works when you've got room to spare. But I guess I'm just, I'm curious, like, so to, to that example, did it seem that the layouts of these things were like adequately or thoroughly designed prior to issuing the bid set?
Well, well, some of them are uncertain. It's like, who gets in there first? And the fire sprinklers, for instance, is typically engineered independent of the design team and, and they go off and get their own permit, even though it's nested into our bigger building permit and construction project. They have their own rules and authorities that, that give them permits. And getting the fire sprinkler lines into that very minimal space and then having the duct work try to work around them was, was challenging. Okay, I mentioned earlier, there were structural challenges where you would assume you could punch a hole here to run a piece of conduit through the floor and then find out that there was a beam right underneath all of it, so.
If I could add a little context, I mean, I think given the site conditions and meaning like the subsurface soils, drainage issues, the retaining wall issue, I mean, those really were ones that we really could have done without. Because right off the bat, it ate up six or seven hundred thousand dollars worth of, of our contingency. So if we didn't have a lot of those issues, these would not be, it wouldn't sting as.
I totally get it. Yeah, no, I totally get that. And I'll speak to that when we come back for, for the discussion. But I understand the, the point that you're making there. My other questions are just kind of around, I just would like to better understand some of these particular items that are called out in the staff report. So like PG&E changing their mind and, and that costing a seventy-five grand based on where they, you know, decide they want to bring in power. It's just like, it's hard to take that at face value as, as an advocate for the taxpayers. And it's like, you know, I guess I, I find myself wondering like, did they submit to us like a written or a drawn plan of where they were going to bring in power or I don't know, like, is there any recourse or?
Nope, they're PG&E. And, and it happens on every one of our projects. We've had projects where everything was done and everyone's sitting on their hands for six months, waiting for PG&E to get their act together. They're, they're a notorious utility that doesn't have to respond to anybody.
Yeah, that is awful.
But, but I do want to say we were very lucky to have one of the best PG&E representatives.
Yes.
And so from a coordination, David Brown, coordination standpoint, responsiveness, I mean, we were getting, you know, really quality service. But some people, you know, the organization had other influences that factored into some of these things.
Okay, thank you. I think the, the only other one that I'll ask about specifically right now is I'm just curious about minor changes in grades from the building to the public sidewalk. The building presumably is at the height it was designed to be at. The sidewalk presumably is at the same height it was before the project started. So I'm, I'm just kind of baffled by that.
And I, I maybe Paul Manille can speak on this. I think mainly this is some of the retaining walls, the like landscape type retaining walls. Really, they were, they were missing in some spots. Not the like overall building structure or the plaza deck. And then otherwise in some spots, the retaining wall design wasn't clear. So it would show what looked like a retaining wall and it would say, see structural detail. But then in that particular instance, there was no structural detail. So then the contractor had to assume that what was drawn schematically was all it was. And so then there was missed, there was no rebar and no footing to where the town had to pay for that portion, but not the wall portion. So there was, we got partial credit, but not full credit, things like that. Paul, do you recall, was there, was there more to that? I, I think also on the backside of the planning offices, we originally just had, it was a one stair and then connection to Willow. I think late we decided, you know, let's, let's make it all ADA, even though it probably would be compliant by accessing the front. Let's, let's go a step further and make sure we have full accessibility for all of our ingress and egress points for staff for the future. So there was a little bit of benefit as well on that.
Okay. All right. Thanks. I'm going to end my questions there. Any other questions from council members that might have come up before we go to public comment?
Oh, and sorry, one more. What did happen as we were going through the code review, I think the one actually you're, you're speaking to is that the calculations for the ingress and egress code requirements for like, you know, evacuating the building. We were doing that a little bit at risk when we were doing the design. And that did create a need for a second ramp in the very front of Tampa Pies that was not in the original design. So I, I guess I won't completely, I'm not going to fault Cappy on that because it came as part of the, you know, building code permit review. And we were moving in parallel at risk because we wanted to take advantage of the best bid climate.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
And I just wanted to clarify, are the cost of, say, renting this temporary space and the temporary trailer, is that part of this, does that come out of the same pot? Okay, great. Cause I just remember that Fred had asked about that and I was just want to clarify that that's just operations.
Yeah, for the record, I'll just put it in the mic. Yeah, no, it's, it's a separate item entirely.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, so we're going to open this up for public comment now. So any members of the public who would like to comment on this item, if you're with us in person, please go ahead and go right to our microphone here. And if you are online, please go ahead and put up your hand on Zoom and we will bring you on.
Uh, we did receive a public comment earlier today. It was uploaded to the website as we typically do. It's available for the public to review and it was shared with council as well. We have a hand raised right now from Patty Stoller.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. I just wanted to ask two questions. One is, I'm not sure I understand the use of the outdoor gathering area. Is that something that has chairs available for old ladies? Or do you take the chairs from inside the council chamber and bring them out? I'm not sure how that works. And the other is during the centennial, I was charged with contacting President Obama on down and getting proclamations from everybody. Will those be on display somewhere either in the archive room or in the hallways? Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Any other questions on Zoom, Lorena?
We don't have any other hands raised on Zoom and no additional email and public comment for this item.
Okay, thank you. And we have no in-person comment, but we did all receive a printout of the public comment that we. Okay. Thank you. And we have no in-person comment, but we did all receive a printout of the public comment that we received earlier. So thank you for that. Um, so seeing no further public comment, I'll go ahead and close public comment on this item. We'll bring it back to the council for uh, discussion. And I'll just start by asking, um, staff, if you wouldn't mind just touching on those two questions, uh, raised by Patty, please.
Yeah. So one of the, um, I think really nice features of the plaza, it has a circular bench that wraps around the redwood trees. Um, so that's kind of the focal centerpiece. Um, there's also a, a second bench that's up against the wall. And then there's, um, I think it's three sets of kind of smaller tables with chairs that can be moved around. Um, you know, people can come and you know, tap into the wifi and, and meet someone from the community and, and things like that. So it really, you know, it's designed to be a, you know, gathering place for all sorts of people in our community.
Perfect. Thank you.
And, um, I don't know about the, the other proclamation comment.
Have not thought of that. We will, I'm sure find a place somewhere. Yeah, I'm sure we'll at the very least get them into the archives, right? You did show them to us, Rebecca. Yeah. So we have them in our possession. They are safe and they will go into the archives or possibly on display. Displays can be changed. So fantastic. Okay. Great questions. Thank you, Patty. Um, we're gonna have our discussion and deliberation on this item now. Um, again, the, the top line question is, um, do we allocate an additional 1.5 million dollars to put this project to bed? Uh, we'll go down the other way this time. So we'll start with Charles.
All right. So, I mean, when it comes to these type of things, right? I, I, I do it every day. And as a public agency, you always have to think, you know, was this just, is this just more work that someone did? If we say, hey, you know, this taxpayer dollar, we don't want to do it, right? Are we making someone go broke? Right? Are we, are we destroying firms and people that were just doing a normal job, right? Uh, standard practice of care, you know, um, negotiations about at risk based on timing and schedule within the design and, and the level of design development that we bid for in the first place. And, you know, the narratives that we write and then, you know, the, the way the contractors are covering cost over the long run and everything else. There's a lot to it. Um, you know, the other thing is, is a smaller municipality, we probably didn't carry a large contingency, but like, you know, and, and larger capital projects, we can carry up to 20% because the the flex on them are so difficult and the phasing and everything is anticipated at those larger projects, but that's why we have those, those larger costs. And it sounds like we ran into that on the smaller project and it does have, you know, real, real dollar, uh, cost. Um, so I mean, you know, the, they're writing, uh, defense like documents about every single one of these evaluations of the cost. It's already there, right? So the question is, did our town manager and, and did they anticipate this? Did they set aside money? Are we really talking about spending money we don't have? And also what we're talking about. I mean, I think like everyone said, it'd be so nice to just get at the price we wanted. So we'd have extra money to spend on other things. But I also think that uh, this facility, you know, I was on the planning commission before this, so I've, I've been going along with it for quite some time. And I really believe that the higher quality service the town can provide will easily pay for itself in the, in the long run, right? Um, by just, uh, trying to create and unlock these bottlenecks that, you know, you see how hard this is just for the town to do for private developers and, 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 and architects and everything else to have a great facility and, and great staff and, and everything else like helps uh, unlock the potential of this town in a lot of ways. And so, um, that's what I hope will cover these costs in the long run and, and, um, I think it's all understandable. You know, I think it's always hard to just be like, oh, you know, 1.5 million dollars, right? But, um, like I said, that's 10% of the total cost. I've seen some of the costing on some of the other projects that have happened in our local municipalities and they're in, in some ways, when you look at what those, what those recent, uh, kind of estimates are, we got a steal for such a big, beautiful building, right? Um, so our timing was actually advantageous as, as they pointed out. And, um, if you posited in comparison to that, you might look and still think we're getting a discount. Um, so uh, those are just kind of my, my general feedbacks and the reason that I didn't want to question all those line items. I think it was good as a questioning as a, a line of understanding. But questioning them in their validity, I think would, would have been dangerous. So, um, that's all. And I, I, I can support it.
Great. Thanks, Charles. Rosa?
Okay. Well, I can see that, um, there were considerable headwinds, both with, um, you know, just the ramp, you know, being able to deliver materials, uh, weather, uh, you know, supply chain issues, all of that. But all in all, I support, uh, granting the 1.5 million because this building is more than just a town council chamber or more than just a place where, you know, uh, services are rendered. I think it's going to be, there's an opportunity for it to be a real cultural center for Corte Madera. Um, I can see, you know, kids maybe taking a field trip there or coming there with their parents to look at the archives. And I think that's really valuable, you know, to, to give them a sense of place and where they are in the history of Corte Madera. So, um, I just, you know, I have no problem just saying, let's do it. Let's get it done. It's going to last 75 to a hundred years. So if you break it out cost per year, it's, you know, it's a bargain. So let's get it done.
Thank you, Rosa. Pat?
So my house is about to turn 100 years old and I think it's got another 100 years in it. So I'm thinking 75 to a hundred years is maybe short term. And just to add some perspective, um, I was at the initial, uh, session with the architect all those years ago when we were giving the communities input into what we wanted to see with this building. And they left with the idea that we wanted a really modern, clean, contemporary feeling civic building with a touch of the Awani Hotel. So we weren't asking for low hanging fruit. We were asking for them to give us something that would really provide a point of pride and a point of, uh, you know, sense of, a sense of who we are as a community. And if you look at what's happened since then, at the time, we were kind of going through a building boom and we were doing the Rena numbers and we were anticipating that there was going to be all this developer activity in our community. And the reason why it hasn't happened is because of the change in the economy, which made prices for everything go up and made, uh, the cost of money, uh, go up. So I think I agree with Paul that we're getting a lot of bang for our buck in this building. Long-term, I think it's going to be a real point of pride and I don't think anybody's going to be saying, yeah, but you know, it went over budget. They never say that. They say if it didn't, if we, if we ended up cutting corners, that's what would be noticed long-term. So as long as the money's not coming from other places, uh, yeah, we should all just thank all the people who shop in the town of Corte Madera for helping us get beyond this, uh, little, little barrier that we're on now. So I can support it.
Thank you, Pat. Fred?
Yeah, thanks. I can support it also. Um, I appreciate RJ, your, the presentation and I appreciate the comments from MAC five. Being a layperson, not having like the expertise that Charles does or Eli. Um, I have a better understanding because when I first saw the 1.5 million, I was like, between that and the, the million contingency, it's like, okay, this seems like over budget, over two and a half million or so. Um, but again, I think I'll have a much better understanding of it. So I appreciate that. Um, I agree with Rosa's comments also, I think, and Pat's also, I think once the building's completed, it's going to be, I think, the centerpiece of the town. And I think it's something that people who are going to be Corte Madera residents are going to be proud of, um, the way it was built and just the look and feel of it. So I think it's going to have that community aspect, which you can't really put a price tag on that because you could, but you don't want to, um, but you can't really put a price tag on it. The only, it's, it's not a concern. It's more like a warm-up. This, it ever cross over now, this may be a warm-up to sanitary district two, where we're talking 27 million over 10 years for projects that need to be done. And I say a warm-up because if we're looking at cost overruns here, those projects are further down the road. I don't know how realistic that 27 million may be. Again, that's a separate conversation. But again, I'm using this as kind of a preempt or a warm-up for the SD two, um, maybe because those are still major projects. So it can be the same type situation and that will affect, potentially directly affect residents on sewage fees and also revenue bonds. So there's just to kind of get that out there.
So Fred, can I ask RJ to answer a question based on that though? Because fundamentally a building project is very, very different in its complexity compared to civil projects, right? And I haven't seen these cost overruns in, in the street sewers, like those are very straightforward bids without so many details, right? And complexities of phase, uh, so is that a fair assessment that we might be facing this? Like before, before we just, before I can accept that Fred, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I mean, I think to your point, um, so I mean, on one hand, we don't control what the construction costs are going to be in, especially five, six, seven plus years, you know? We can look at past trends. We can get a sense of where we are, but no one really knows, just like the stock market. But, um, talking to the complexity, um, on a typical five million dollar sewer job, you might have 30 RFIs on a project of this, we're talking hundreds. So it's, you know, the details are a lot different. Um, when we have unforeseen's on those projects, we go out there, we give direction, we write a field directive or a change order and we move on. This one, it goes to the architect who then has to respond, who then has to create another detail or kick it over to their structural engineer who then creates a detail, kicks it back, kicks it to MAC five. Then the plans get completely updated and resent. So I mean, it's, you know, imagine i- i- you know, trying to explain how to design something highly complex, a car and put it in a piece of, set of documents, you know, it's, it's, it's kind of that challenging. You have so much going on.
Thanks for that. Were you done?
Yep, I'm done.
Okay. Uh, well, thank you. I would second the comments of my colleagues. I think high level, what's important is the importance of, of this building is not diminished. The importance, uh, of, of what it's going to provide, not only to our staff, but to our community. Uh, I think it's not diminished and, and high level, I think what's good is that it, it, my sense is that we're still a long way from any point where we might say, now we're starting to question whether this building was worth the money. So that's the good news. Um, in terms of the, you know, the, the cost overruns that we're seeing here, in my mind, I kind of put it into two buckets. Uh, one bucket is things like unforeseen site conditions, uh, you know, upgrades, like decisions that we make, um, construction management. You know, when, when the construction management bill has to increase because the project is going longer, more construction means more construction management. That, that just is what it is. Or like weather. So these are all things that are really, you know, they're either out of our hands or they're decisions that we knowingly and deliberately made, and that's totally fine. Um, and so, you know, when it comes to things like weather or unforeseen conditions, my personal feeling is it sucks, but it is what it is. And we do the best to mitigate. We do the best to work around it. But at the end of the day, right? That's, that's construction. The other bucket, uh, which is what concerns me a little bit more is oversights or, or things where it feels like things may have been inadequately thoroughly designed. Um, and I'm not, you know, I'm, I'm not on like the project review team here. I don't have any, any, you know, real intimate familiarity with the plan. So I'm, I'm trusting and delegating, uh, you know, to RJ and Adam to, to sort of be our eyes and ears in those meetings and, and to really be, um, you know, advocates, as I know you are for, for the town and for the taxpayers in making sure that if you do see things, um, or if, or if MAC five sees things, uh, where you kind of scratch your head and say, hey, you know, I really don't think that that maybe, you know, quite met the standard of care. Or maybe that's just what, you know, maybe that's not what we're used to seeing in, in projects of this scale. You know, we trust you guys to, uh, to sort of chase that down and make sure that if it's a situation where somebody needs to be held accountable, they are. Um, RJ, I really appreciated what you said, you know, when you said, we're going to fight tooth and nail for every dollar. Cause at the end of the day, right? This is an expensive project and it's all public money. And we're going to make sure that that money is spent as best we can. Um, I would also just highlight that at the very beginning of when we were talking about this project, we were debating whether to knock down Talon Hall and build a new building, or whether to try and just renovate the existing hundred-year-old town hall. That option was tempting because it was way cheaper and knowing what we know now, that would have been an unmitigated disaster. So I feel, you know, I feel like we're validated in the path that we took. Um, you know, i- i- and I think it goes to show that it, you can't be shortsighted about these things. Um, sometimes costs go up. Sometimes you make the design decisions that, that increase the cost. You just can't be shortsighted about it. As Pat said, a hundred years from now, people are going to be left with this building. Town of Corte Madera is going to have a totally different tax base, a totally different budget. They're going to have the same town hall. So, uh, I, I think you put it really well, Pat. Um, and for those reasons, I can support this. Uh, so with that, we're ready to take a motion.
So move that we approve the 1.5 million from the town project fund. Um, do I need to read the whole thing?
Go ahead.
And the additional, we'll allocate additional 1421 in construction contingency for the Corte Madera town hall project and authorize the director of public works to execute a contract addendum with MAC five for construction management for an additional $79,000.
Second. Okay. Council member Casissa?
Yes.
Council member Lee?
Yes.
Council member Thomas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor of Ozio?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
All right. Thank you. And thank you. Thank you, team. Thank you, Adam, RJ. Thank you to our MAC five, uh,
Five, great.
teammates. Appreciate it.
Thanks for your support.
All right. So we're going to move on to item seven on tonight's agenda, which is council reports, and we will start with the town manager's report.
Just real quickly, I just wanted to publicly, uh, communicate that we, I did respond to, we had a couple of, of public comments at the last council meeting, uh, regarding Colony Way. Town staff has looked into that and responded to, uh, the public commenter um, regarding the actual right of way of calling it Colony Way and the public nature of that sort of a stub of a street. Which it is, which is kind of, uh, interesting, but, but, um, have communicated as well to the neighbor who, uh, allegedly was putting up some obstacles for that access way to get to the, um, one of the properties, 515, uh, Redwood. So, um, that, uh, you know, just, I'll, I'll see. I haven't heard back. I got no response, but, uh, have made those communications and I, and I'm, I'm sort of hopeful that we'll restore some neighborly relations with that common understanding of what that actual piece of land is, um, adjacent to their properties. Um, on, uh, another piece of news, just, um, we are just now, uh, negotiating or, or I shouldn't call it negotiating, but but trying to settle on a start date for our building official. So, um, appreciate the council's support at the last meeting. Um, and, uh, that's really great news. And especially we were talking about moving into this new building and having that permit center active. Um, I can't be, I think we got the right person to sort of set the tone for that space and, and move that forward. So, uh, that's all I have to report.
Thank you. And now we will have our town council reports and we'll start with Fred.
Uh, thanks. I attended a, um, one of Ross Valley Paramedic Authority Subcommittee, which we're looking at the lease with the town of Ross, where the paramedic units is housed there. That lease is up on June 30th. So we're looking to try and figure out how to extend that lease. As part of that subcommittee also, we're probably going to be proposing to the full board, a deployment stud- study, um, which was look at the deployment of the paramedics service calls are doing to figure out the best locations where they should be within the Ross Valley. I also attended the age-friendly, uh, Corte Madera meeting. Um, there's a lot of discussion about senior center, which I think is on our agenda for our next meeting. And just a reminder that the age-friendly surveys out there also. So thanks.
Great. Thank you, Charles.
Yeah, uh, I was unfortunate in that I couldn't attend in person today, the, um, chamber of commerce, but Julie uh, gave me a few updates. One is, um, they're going to have a chamber, uh, mixer at Tesla, uh, March 21st. Um, and also now Cybertruck's been released, uh, Tesla may, uh, allow Cybertruck to go in the parade. So I don't know. I thought that'd be fun. So just wanted to share that. That's all I have to report.
Do we have a time on that mixer yet?
I do not have the time for the my first mixer.
Thank you.
Hopefully we can update that maybe in the newsletter or something.
Perfect. All right. Rosa?
Okay. Um, I forgot to write down the date. I did this, but I went to the, uh, Lions Club, uh, dinner where Damon Connolly, uh, came and spoke on a various, uh, bills that have been passed this year. Bills he's, he's working on. And also the public was very vocal about wanting legislation around e-bikes. Um, also yesterday I attended the Twin Cities Disaster Preparedness, uh, Committee. And, uh, the main discussion had to do with engagement and outreach to parts of the Twin Cities that don't have, um, NRGs. And also the CEA Brace and Bolts Grant, that's the, um, earthquake insurance. Uh, they give grants, uh, once a year. And I think that the period to apply has closed now, but they're working on getting the information out to everybody about the next time that, uh, is open. Uh, I also attended yesterday the Marin Healthy Youth and we're talking about getting more youth in leadership roles since it's all about reaching them. And so they don't need a bunch of gray hairs like me making decisions of how to reach them. And, uh, I want to say that, um, RJ, Phoebe and Amy did a great job of presenting, um, the models at the, um, workshop for Marina Village. That was really, really great. Really, really informative. I think people got a lot out of it. I know I did. And that's my report.
Great. Thank you.
A little birdie just told me the, uh, the mixer is going to be five thirty to seven.
Perfect. Thank you.
Birdie.
And thank, thanks to Julie.
Birdie.
Pat?
Uh, so I attended the, uh, Marin Council of Mayors and, uh, Council Members Legislative Committee. And there too, there was a great conversation about the need for e-bike uh, legislation, but even more importantly, um, a discussion about how to enforce it. And I know there's been a lot of talk with Mike Norton about that. So, um, maybe modeling it sort of on the social host, uh, idea, um, could work, but I'm glad to see those conversations are going on. Also think I was the only one at the MCCM online meeting with the, uh, Marin Community Foundation new CEO, which, um, she's pretty much staying the course. There aren't a lot of new initiatives to, uh, divest in any of that 3.6 million, billion B with a B anytime soon. But, um, hopefully she, she was getting prodded just a little bit in that area. So we'll see. And then only other thing, March 14th, Lions will be hosting our school superintendent Brett Geitman, who is going to give us a little state of the schools address. So I hope you guys all come along to that.
Awesome. Thank you. And I just have, uh, two items to report on. February 22nd, I, uh, participated in the town hall design subcommittee meeting with Pat. And on February 22nd, I attended a Transportation Authority of Marin meeting. Uh, and the only item that I wanted to highlight from that is they're in the process of doing, uh, basically a risk assessment of all of the county's transit infrastructure. And so they're basically going jurisdiction by jurisdiction. So there's a little Corte Madera section in the report where they take an inventory of all of our, inventory of all of our, you know, bus stops, roadways, um, all of our transit infrastructure. And they basically assess, um, you know, what are the, what are the risk factors, climate risk factors that these things are facing? Whether it's like sea level rise, um, or, you know, other kinds of flooding, what have you. Um, so that process is in the works. And I think, you know, I think the ultimate goal of that, right, is to put together an actionable plan where we can then get grant money um, and, and raise funding to hopefully help, uh, do some climate adaptation projects and sort of, uh, climate-proof our transit infrastructure. Um, so that's all I've got. Um, so that concludes our council reports. Uh, do we have any comments on the draft agenda for the next meeting? And if not, we are adjourned. All right. Thank you.